Okay. Welcome to Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, May 10. Preston, follow up.
Mrs. Step?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Habermill?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis? All members present?
Stand with the flag, ladies and gentlemen, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Crystal has a... Let me just say everything.
Okay. So the House of Representatives sent in its operating budget bill, which is House Bill 110, to the Senate. So this is currently pending in the Ohio Senate, so it's not completely gone through yet. A lot of information on this, so I just kind of pulled a couple of things out. And Justin, correct me if I completely misinterpret any of this. I'm going to do my best here. But it included the new school funding formula, which I think I've touched on a couple of times before. They've been looking at this and been looking at this. So this is something the House has put through now, which replaces the current $6,020 per pupil formula with a variable-per-pupil base. And it says based on fiscal year 2018, average staff salary and district spending inputs and certain pupil-staff ratios. So my understanding is instead of it being just a flat rate before, now they're looking at different variables to determine how much each district would get. I think from what I saw, it looks like most districts will be getting more. There was a handful that will get less, but probably yet to be determined on that. Also included some policy changes. One of them was extending the ability of the boards to meet virtually. It was set to expire in July. Now that's going to go through the end of the year through December 31st. Eliminates, I guess Dewine had made a proposal for a requirement that would require high school students to complete the FAFSA prior to graduation. This would eliminate that, or proposing to eliminate that. Would permit high school juniors to opt out of taking the SATs or ACTs as well. So we'll keep an eye on that, see if that goes through. And then one interesting one that I saw, this was actually from last month, but I wasn't here to present on it, so I wanted to touch on it today, is House Bill 117. This one is currently pending in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. I felt like this was really pertinent to us. This would allow individuals to reside in a city, I believe it was a city, town, or village that is split between two districts, to petition to transfer their property from one district to an adjacent district. I think some things like this have gone, or tried to go through before, but this one would require only 10% of those residing in the home who voted in the most recent election signatures. And I looked at it three or four times. It looks like just the people residing in that home would have to be on the petition for this. As long as they get that, it can be placed on the ballot for a vote. If the vote approves it, then nobody can stop it. It's just going to go through then and be approved. So there's a lot of controversy surrounding this because it used to be that the State Department of Education could intervene and some higher bodies could say, yes, it's good, no, it's not, and kind of go from there. But now it looks like if this were to go through, there would be no way to stop it if the vote passed on it. So we'll keep an eye on that.
That's all. Okay. We have a superintendent report.
Okay. I thought that Pat Graves and Stacy Webb would be here to make a presentation, but they gave me a fact sheet here. So I'm going to read off of this and let you know a little bit about this trip that's coming up for the England-France study and travel abroad. So it's going to take place in the spring of 2023. It's a 12-day trip. It's pending final itinerary. And students and faculty traveling will miss approximately three school days. The leaders of the group are Pat Graves, Jen Higley, Kelly Pankost, and Stacy Webb. The tour company that's putting this tour on is EF Educational Tours. Potential travelers for the trip will be open to all juniors and seniors, sophomores as well, that are enrolled in French III will be eligible as well. And parents are welcome to travel with the group. The approximate cost for the trip is $4,500, and the students will pay all fees through the EF Tours, and they can pay in installments. Costs will include a round-trip airfare, tour director, hotels, land travel, entry fees to museums and attractions, and all breakfasts and dinner. The purpose of the trip will be multifaceted as they journey throughout England and France, and it's going to take them to a variety of culturally significant settings. In the travels, it will expose the students to a variety of places so that they can gain an appreciation for historical, literary, and artistic locations. These experiences will enhance their learning and understanding of the world, which are critical skills as they become more globally interrelated. Additionally, French students will utilize their language skills and have the experience of the unique culture as they spend several days in France. So highlights of the itinerary are going to include, in London, Westminster Abbey, the Tower of London, the House of Parliament, St. Paul Cathedral, and Buckingham Palace. In England, they'll go to Canterbury Cathedral, White Cliffs of Dover, Stratford, Oxford. Paris, they'll go to the Eiffel Tower, Notre Dame Cathedral, the Seine River cruise, and Champs-Élysées. In France, they'll go to the beach of Normandy and the American Cemetery, and along with a couple of other things here. So I'm just going to speak for them. I think that one of the things that we talked about at the previous board meeting was just a little bit of a concern that we had with the tour company that, across Ohio, I think, was a problem for a lot of school districts and ended up absconding with the money.
Remember that? Wasn't the Chicago, the middle school trip, wasn't it?
That was the middle school trip, right? Yeah, they closed down and were not able to refund the money. I think that this comes up to the parents as to how they're going to pay for this. They can pay for it all upfront, they can wait and pay toward the end, or they can pay in installments. So I know that Pat and Kelly and Stacy Webb and Jen have, Jen Higley, have made arrangements with the company to pay in different ways. I'm sure that they're warning the parents to be careful, but they're also saying that this is not that tour company. This is a more reliable tour company that's been in business for quite a while. And I don't think that we've got the concerns with this company, but that's not to say that, once again, this is foolproof or something can't happen because you never know in this day and age with things like this. So I'm sure they're giving the parents ample warning, and I would just ask the board to go ahead and go with the trip, and we're telling the parents and the teachers, though, be cautious and just make a choice as to how you want to make your, if you want to do an installments or you want to, however you want to pay it, but understand that the school district's doing their best to vet this and make sure that they're reputable companies. And I trust Pat and the group, the entire group there, that they're making good decisions with this company. And so I would recommend that we just go ahead and let the students experience this trip. We're talking quite a ways away, and there's going to be a long time in between then and now, but I think it's a good thing.
I know it's early in the game, but do they have any idea, like, is there a minimum number they need to get to to make it a viable trip?
I don't have the number, but I can get it to you. I can send it over to you.
Not important at all, just curious.
I'm not sure what that number is, but I can, I will send that to you when I find out. So...
Most trips are important. I remember about every day of my span, a trip there was in all kinds of...
It's a good experience. Okay. That's that on my agenda. The next thing I'd like to tell you is that we interviewed for two counselors, and we did not go outside of the district because we felt like we had two wonderful candidates here in Vermillion. And first, we interviewed for an elementary position, and then we interviewed for a high school position. Allison Skelland took the high school position, and she's not here tonight because she's already come to the board at a previous meeting and got hired through the district and introduced herself at a board meeting, so you know who she is. But Monroe Nale won the elementary position, and it was a really rigorous process that she had to go through. And we're really happy to get her. And I'd like her to come up for a few minutes and just introduce herself to the board and talk a little bit about herself.
Well, hello, everyone. I am Monroe Nale, and I am a proud sailor. I graduated from Vermillion in 2015, and since then, I earned a bachelor's degree in psychology from Bowling Green State University. And this upcoming Saturday, I graduate from Cleveland State University with a Master of Education in School Counseling, so I'm very excited about that. I have worked at Sailor Way for the last two and a half years as a substitute teacher. Last year, I had the opportunity to teach seventh grade math for the entire year, and that was wonderful. It was a big learning experience for me, and I am so grateful that Beth Bartlamay gave that opportunity to me. I have wanted to be a school counselor for this district since I was in second grade and met Mrs. Gonzalez. I wanted to be just like her. I am so passionate and so ready to get started. I am so thankful for all of my teachers that had me as a student throughout my education here. They have just poured their heart and souls into me, and I am ready to give that all back. So thank you so much for having me, and I'm looking so forward to being a part of your team and working with Mr. Malier over at BES.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Monroe. Yeah, we're looking forward to Monroe and Allison being part of the counseling team, and we strengthened up that team by adding a counselor back this year. We believed that with the circumstances of COVID going on in the district, that we needed that extra help for mental health counseling and just for counseling in general. There's a lot of stress, anxiety that's still connected with COVID, and I think having that extra counselor was, will be good for us. So thank you for agreeing to add that staff. Okay. My third item on the agenda tonight. Brett Dawson is one of our music teachers here and works with our band and our music programs, and he has an opportunity coming up in January at Ohio State for, well, not actually Ohio State, I'm sorry, the Rose Bowl Parade. I'm sorry. I don't know why I was thinking Ohio State.
They may be playing in that game.
That's right. That's a good possibility. Usually, Ohio State's synonymous sometimes with the Rose Bowl, so that's probably why I said it. But Brett, can you come up and talk to us about the program that you have an opportunity to be part of?
I can do it. So Sean, I have to go back before?
I can.
You got it. Okay, so, um, should I maybe not take off? No, I'll let him off. That's fine. Okay. So there is a, in Pickerton South, down in Columbus, they had a band director there for about 38 years. I didn't know him personally, but I had heard of him. His name's Michael D. Seewell, and he just passed away a couple of years ago, and he had a very big impact on the band programs in Columbus and kind of put Pickerton on the map nationally. So when he passed away, his wife founded the Michael D. Seewell Foundation. There's just some information here about the foundation. They just recently sponsored a service-through-music award through the Tournament of Roses, which I think is kind of how this got started. So they give that to one of the bands that are performing at the Rose Bowl. And that's just, like I said, a little bit about the foundation. So two, about a year and a half ago, they started recruiting for a marching band of band directors. This is the first ensemble of this type that's ever been done in any kind of parade. Normally, they accept marching bands or floats separately, and this is the first in the Rose Bowl. They're putting them both together in an integrated way. So we're creating a, they're creating a float that's going to honor not just Mr. Seewell, but all band directors throughout the country. They are very, very close to getting their goal of 300 band directors from around the country. They've had to go through a fairly rigorous process to apply, and I got accepted to go, which is super exciting. Their goal is to get people from 50 states. I think the last I checked, they're 47. They're missing like Alaska, Hawaii, and I think Alabama or something like that. So it's going to be a really, really awesome experience. Going up to California is going to be a four-day trip, and they're going to be marching the Rose Bowl, right? It's going to be really cool. So this is just an overview of what the four days look like. We're flying in on the 29th, coming out on the 2nd, just in time to turn around and come back to school on the 3rd. So that should be fun. But it's a busy, busy four days, ending up with marching on, in the Rose Bowl on January 1st. So the fun part is not just getting to march in a big parade like this, which is super awesome, but all of the knowledge and things I'm going to get to bring back to our kids here in Vermillion. You know, I'm going to be making professional contacts with directors from around the country. That's going to open up lots of doors in terms of potentially taking trips with the high school band to, you know, one of these states where we know one of these directors. Zoom and Skype rehearsals either with the middle school or the high school, playing concerts for each other. There's lots of really cool things with technology we can do now that if we have contacts, we can share information back and forth. And not just that, but I'm going to be hopefully working with and talking with some of the best band directors from around the nation and just soaking all of that and being able to bring that knowledge, ideas, those strategies, that pedagogy back to help our kids here. Obviously, the district's going to be listed as one of those. I did a little bit of Google research. I think there's around 13,000-ish districts in the U.S. that are public, and unless a district has more than one director going, that's about 300 districts that'll be represented, which is super cool. And, you know, one of the things that I'm most excited about is getting to talk about this with the kids because I know they're going to be excited about it. They're going to be able to wake up on New Year's Day and turn on the TV and know, hey, Mr. Dawson said, that's really cool. And, you know, when Mrs. Jen and I talk to, especially the high school band and the middle school kids in terms of practicing and, you know, talking the talk, this is going to be able to prove to them, hey, we're not just talking the talk, we can walk the walk, and we can do this. This is how it's done, and, you know, this is how you find success doing this. And obviously, I'm going to, I'm planning on doing some lessons before the trip, you know, about the Rose Bowl and its history and, you know, my preparation and what all the other band directors are doing to get prepared and that kind of stuff, just to build excitement with the kids. So the reason that I'm here is it's, obviously, there's money attached to it. I'm also getting married literally a year later, New Year's Eve of '22, so it's not an inexpensive trip. So I'm hopeful that the board would see fit to help in some way. Obviously, anything would help, but I'm thankful one way or the other just to be able to share the opportunity with everybody and bring all the information back to our kids and our program.
Great. Congratulations.
Very excited. Thank you. I'm very excited to go. It's an awesome opportunity, and I don't know if there's going to be another one like this, so I have to at least apply and try.
Do you not practice together until you get there?
Nope. They're doing custom arrangements. The one that we're going to do in the main section is, oh, gosh, is it 99 trombones or something on those lines? So I mean, it's a standard that everybody's going to know, but, I mean, it's like a five-and-a-half-mile break. I had no idea until they sent all the details, but, oh, I'm going to have to start walking around Vermillion with my saxophone. Good. So I'm very excited to go. It's an awesome opportunity.
Thanks, Brett. We'll get back with you. We'll talk amongst the board.
Absolutely.
We'll let you know. Thank you. Okay. That's all I have on my report. No, I ain't going. Okay. Yeah, a couple more. Thanks.
This pre-meeting, we voted, all right, we're good.
All right. I'd like to recommend a resolution for the board to approve your resignation of Lisa DeLees, the principal of Vermillion High School, effective July 31st, 2021.
Followed.
I'll second.
Any questions on this?
Just a comment about why this took place. There was an opening, and it's on the consent agenda a little bit later as we go through this agenda. Our assistant superintendent slash curriculum director, who had been with us for 12 years, Jim Valada, retired. And so this opened up the position, and Lisa's been at the high school as a principal for five years, and she's got a great knowledge of curriculum and has the respect of the staff here at the high school. And I think that Lisa will be a really great choice for this position. It's coming up on my next agenda item here, which I'll read in just a second, but I'm recommending her for a two-year contract for the assistant superintendent's job that Jim vacated. So I just wanted to mention Jim's name because his name is on the consent agenda, and Jim was a colleague of mine from another school district, and I will miss him greatly because him and I worked hand-in-hand in the position. But I'm confident that Lisa and I will work very closely together as well, and I know that the board's going to be talking about my position a little bit later on in a discussion item, too, as well. So lots of news to share about moves that are happening here in the district tonight, but so Lisa, I'm recommending your resignation of the principal spot tonight.
Can I get hired first?
No, we've got to take your resignation first.
It's a change of tradition.
Like a dirty second, ugh! Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to need your keys first. Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5 to 0. Okay. Just want to watch Lisa's sweat. Recommend a resolution for the board to approve a two-year contract to Lisa DeLees, the superintendent and director of curriculum, beginning August 1st, 2021, at a salary of $117, $161.
Followed. I'll second. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5 to 0.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And that is all I got for my report.
Okay, Ms. Treasure Report, Preston, please.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for April 30th, 2021, as attached to your packet.
Followed.
All right. First, we'll start off with the general fund revenue. Through the month of April, the district has received $23.3 million in general fund revenue compared to $23.1 million at this time last year, $23.1 million in fiscal year 19, $23.3 in '18, and $22.00 gained this fiscal year '17. So as you can see with those numbers, month-to-date here, they don't change very much. We're right on pace to collect the same amount of revenue that we have historically. Moving on to food service revenue. Again, through the month of April, we received $133,000 in food service compared to $431,000 at this time last year, $593,000 in '19, $519,000 in '18, and $571,000 in '17. Food service program, again, it's been greatly affected by COVID. However, with students back in person, the fund should stabilize the remaining of the year, and again, we should finish the year with positive cash flow. Moving on to all funds. Again, through the month of April, we have received $26 million. Last year at this time, we received $26.1 million, $25 million in '19, $25.2 million in '18, $25.3 million in '17. So again, just like our general fund revenue, all funds are right on pace to collect what we have historically on average there. Looking at the expenditures for the general fund through the month of April, we've expended $19.1 million from the general fund compared to $19.7 at this time last year, $18.7 in '19, $19.5 in '18, and $19.9 in '17. With the ebbs and flows that we have with expenditures here, again, with the expenditure side of things, we're still right on pace to spend historically what we have as well. Moving on to food service through April, we've expended $523,000 in food service compared to $663,000 at this time last year, $556,000 in '19, $536,000 in '18, $513,000 in '17. So again, even though we haven't had quite the revenue, our expenditures still remain the same for the most part. Again, the main cost of expenditures in food service is staffed, and so even though we weren't serving the food, we didn't have as many meals as we were providing, our expenditures are still going to remain fairly high with that. Moving on to all funds. Again, through the month of April, we've expended $21.7 million from all funds compared to $22.9 at this time last year, $20.7 in '19, $21.3 in '18, and $22.2 in '17. So again, when you look at the revenue for all funds and when you look at the expenditures of all funds, again, everything's still staying pretty consistent where it has been historically. And lastly, we'll take a look at cash. Through the month of April, in the general fund, the district has a total of $20.1 million in cash compared to $19.3 at this time last year, $18.8 in '19, $17.8 in '18, and $16.8 in fiscal year '17. Moving on to food service. Through the month of April, we have a total of $83,929 in cash compared to $156,000 at this time last year, $337,000 in '19, $249,000 in '18, and $249,000 in '17. With the federal government and the state extending the free and reduced lunch, we'll continue to see higher revenues throughout the months here, and so hopefully, we can get that food service fund after the summer, once next year starts back up, see that creeping back up into where we have been historically. Then last, we'll take a look at all cash. Through the month of April, we have a total of $23.7 in cash compared to $22.5 at this time last year, $22.2 in '19, $21.2 in '18, and $20.3 in '17. And then again, onto the investment side here. Investments are just continuing to underperform every month. It gets a little bit lower for us. Through April, we've earned a total of $152,355.17 on interest compared to $264,732.04 at this time last year. The difference between the two years is $112,376.87, or 73.7% less. Each month, Star Ohio keeps getting lower and lower and lower. Believe it or not, at one point in time, Star Ohio, a year and a half ago, we were receiving just over $4,000 a month, and now we're down to $187. As you can see, our balance hasn't changed. So from January, February, March, April, you can see the numbers just declining there. And it's going to continue to do so for a while here.
Any questions on that? Oh, how about... I'm going to have to just log in over here. I'll move.
Second.
We got to vote on the, we got to pass the, not pass the, financials here first.
Yeah, we already moved on, right?
We moved on, so we'll vote here.
Yes, follow.
All right. Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Step?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5 to 0. Number two, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the following donations. $150 from Philip and Amy Pembet to Fine Arts Club Scholarship. $14,500 from the Vermillion Athletic Booster Club to Vermillion Local School District for payment of half of the cost to purchase new bleachers for the upper area in the gymnasium. $331 from the Vermillion Lions Club to help with senior fees. Donation of two tennis rackets and tennis balls from Kristy Schichler to the tennis team. Donation of bicycle parts from Bicycle Builds to VHS STEM. $600 from Chris Gordleone to the Hearing Scholarship, and $1,400 from Roger Hearing to the Hearing Scholarship Fund. $80 from PROM from the Athletic Boosters, and $100 from Lisa DeLees to the Fine Arts Club Scholarship. Lisa DeLeese to the Fine Arts Club Scholarship. I'll move.
I'll second. Any questions on that? Just wanted to say thank you to everyone who donated. I just really appreciate every penny of it.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abenfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number three, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the 2020 E-Rate project for VES at a cost of $38,671.08 for the update to the core network that serves all district locations and the networking equipment at VES as attachment B.
I'll move.
Second. What exactly is that?
It's the networking equipment at the elementary school. It's a E-Rate project, so the actual total's $90,000 and 60% of it's covered from the federal government, so.
Got you. All right.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abenfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Number four, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the May 2021 five-year forecast and the May 2021 assumptions as attachment C. I'll move.
I'll second.
This one I have to stand up for, I can't sit there and do this one. You got to be able to look. So all of you have a five-year forecast, the actual numbers there, I haven't highlighted for you yet, just they're hard to read, so it's easier to see when you have them highlighted. But the main purpose of the five-year forecast, again, is to engage the board, education, and the community specifically for long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the school districts. It also serves as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And then lastly, it's also to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Otter State's office to identify school districts with potential financial problems. Those financial problems, fiscal caution, watch, or emergency. So I have these coordinated, colored coordinated to the five-year forecast in front of you. What we're going to look at right now is the local taxes, that's going to be the color green on your forecast there, so you can see them in the lines there. It's going to be lines 1.010, 020, and 050. Local property taxes, they account for 73.3% of our revenue. Property values, assessed property values are now just above where they were in 2008. So it took from 2008 until last year to finally get your home values higher than they were back in 2008. Property tax collection rates the past three years, they've actually been over 100%, which is really good. And the first half, and another set of good news here, the first half of 2021, we did not have any impact on our tax collection revenue. When I was doing the November forecast and even the May forecast at this time last year with COVID hitting, I did not know what that would do to our tax collection rates. And I'm happy to announce that they really didn't have much of an impact at all this year so far. This is just a quick breakdown to show you your historical property values. So again, in 2008, we were sitting at $456 million in assessed property value. Once the mortgage crisis hit, you can see how far down it went and dropped from 456 million down to 418,000 in 2012, and then it stayed there for a couple of years. And then eventually, you know, starting in 2015, it started rising out of that. Back in 2018, those values hit 451 million, still just shy of where we were in 2012, 2008. And then in 2019, we had a new assessment. Our property taxes then went from 451 million and the assessed value shot up to 477 million. So again, it took that long just to get our property values back to where they were and then, you know, increased them. Those things do have a little bit of an effect on our property tax collections. They've done some things since 2011, particularly the TPP and everything else that goes along with it. But I did want to show you what our, what our local property taxes, where they are in our collection reform. So again, you can see right now, anticipated for 2021, we're at 17.6 billion. You know, from 2018 to 2021, we hover right around that 17.3 million, we're pretty consistent in our collections there. Before that, we were just fighting off delinquencies there. And again, that's why our numbers are that much higher than they were before, because we've been over 100% in our collections the last couple of years. Again, a good sign that things are turning back here for us. Moving on to the other source of revenue, the state revenue, that's the stuff that I have highlighted in yellow for you. That's going to be 1.035 and 1.045 in your forecast. You know, there's two types, there's restricted and unrestricted. The restricted grants aid, that's going to be your catastrophic cost reimbursement, your economic disadvantaged funding, and your career tech funding. The unrestricted grant, which, what that means is we don't have any restrictions on those funds that we receive from the state, we can spend however we need to. Those unrestricted funds, they account for 15.1% of our revenue from the state. And then as Crystal had alluded to in her presentation, foundation funding right now is being discussed at the state level, it's in the legislation right now, it's likely going to change, but we really don't know what that change is going to be. Hasn't been determined. There has been some discussion that because of the ESER funds from the federal government, that they are going to reduce the economic disadvantaged funding from the state side, you know, because states are receiving money from the federal government to cover some of that economic disadvantaged funding, so the state looks at it as, well, they already have their money, we can take some of it back from the foundation payments here. None of that has been hashed out, there are no numbers on that yet, but again, everything's up in the air still. But the funding for the unrestricted portion of it will change in the future, we just don't know exactly what that's going to change to. What I have here is just a historical breakdown of both restricted and unrestricted grants aid. I have the enrollment that we had, and then how much we receive from the state, the dollar amount change year after year, and the percent change year after year. Once we get down to the forecasted side, you can see I have it pretty much set at 0%. The reason I have it set there is, again, I just don't know what's going to happen. When Ms. Russell had said that most schools were looking to receive a little bit more revenue from the new funding plan, based on those projections, Vermillion was set to receive right around $89,000 more. But again, it's not quite there yet. What happened again in 2019, that was our state funding, and then in 2019 is when the pandemic hit, Governor Dewan reduced, I should say, 2020, Governor Dewine reduced K-12 funding. He ended up reducing the funding from Vermillion by 438,111. That same reduction carried over into this year, fiscal year 2021, with one caveat, they actually gave about half of it back this year. And so the reason the number is going up in 2022 is I'm hoping they'll give back all the funding that they have cut currently, and once they give back all the funding, I'm leaving it basically at 0% across the board, just because I don't know which way the funding's going to go yet. Moving on to all other revenues, that is the pink line in your forecast, all of the revenues are forecasted to account for 5.5% of the district's revenue. This type of revenue is your tuition, transportation, investments, sale of assets, payment of low taxes, and Medicaid reimbursements. Tuition from other school districts whose students attend our schools, as well as open enrollment. Again, this line is estimated to increase slightly over the course of the forecasting period. Mainly for that is our increases, I'm hoping that by 2020, 2023, we'll have higher interest rates, and that'll improve that line. So moving on, now that we've gone through all the revenue portions of the forecast, I wanted to show you a quick historical view of our forecast revenue, of our actuals and our estimate. As you can see, our revenue stays pretty flat across the board. The only exception is in 2020, and that's not really an exception, what happened was I ended up transferring $3 million from outside the fund and then reducing it from outside the fund, and the way we have to do the accounting, it ended up inflating our revenue and also inflating our expenditures by $3 million. We didn't have additional money, which is just the way the accounting goes. So really, instead of that 27.4, subtract $3 million from it, that's right where we were, which is right in line with where we always are, right around the $24 million mark.
Justin, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Before you move away from revenue. The line item that says property tax allocation, what is that?
So that's going to be some of the pup, the utility companies, that's going to be some of the home spend and rollback that we get from the state. So people of a certain age, of a certain disability, the state pays 10%, 2.5%, that's the rollback that we get forward. All that stuff just gets captured in there. You could argue that it's state money, but it just falls into local, it just makes more sense there. All right. Now we're onto the expenditure side, so we're going to take a look at our personnel services. It's going to be 3.010 with the blue line in your forecast. This is the largest portion of our expenditures, our salaries, just our salaries, account for 43.4% of our total expenditures. This line consists of salaries and wages, it includes your extended time, it includes severance pay, it includes all the supplemental contracts, and it also includes all overtime. Personnel services have made fairly flat by historical negotiated wage increases, and the reason for that is due to attrition. However, we anticipate to increase in this forecast anyway, 2.11%. The reason for that is there's going to be wage negotiations moving forward, employees are going to go up on the salary schedule each year, there's going to be higher, I should say, there's going to be additional educational requirements that are for employees, and so all that stuff drives the cost up. This right here is just the historical and forecasted salaries. As you can see, it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit. But one major thing that I wanted to draw attention to is this year, fiscal year 2021. We did not go from 11.8 million in salaries last year to 11.1 million this year. That is where I plan to, I haven't done it yet, but I'm planning to re-code all of the salaries to the ESER funds, once those become available, and then we'll be reimbursed for those ESER funds, once we get that back. I'm hoping that we can transfer that out to the PI levy, just so we can make sure that we earmark that money for new roofs, new HVAC systems, new buses, things that we need, to make sure we have the capital for it. And then again, that's 2022 to 2023, 2024, 2025, that's all 2.2% increase there. Moving on to benefits. Benefits account for 15.4% of the budget, and it is forecasted to increase over the next five years. This consists of retirement for all employees, this includes workers' compensation, early retirement incentives, Medicare, unemployment, and all health-related insurances. Over the next five years, we have an estimate increasing 4.7% every year. Again, this is going to be the actual versus the historical. And again, you can see it's starting to creep up, starting to go down, starting to creep up. Starting in 2021, I just got off the call, I had a Lake Erie Regional Council Board of Trustees meeting this morning, they're basing our premium, and they're basing it on a 7% increase every year. They're being conservative with that, but that's what the consortium is doing. So again, we wanted to follow suit in some way to make sure that we're not going to be under forecasting those costs. Moving on to purchase services, purchase services account for 13.8% of our forecast. These type of things include tuition paid to external providers, it's our utilities, it's our services for operation, it's tuition expenses for scholarships, it's community schools, it's open enrollment transfers out. I just pulled the numbers from last year, these numbers for this year aren't quite confirmed yet, so last year is to give you an idea of how much money is leaving our district via our foundation payment. We've paid out $662,000 in open enrollment, we've paid out $206,000 to community schools, we've paid out $256,000 in scholarship transfers, we've paid out $188,000 to ESC. All in all, we ended up paying 1.3 million dollars just for students transferring out of our district. And then the money that we receive for students coming into our district, that's what falls under your other operating, but I've been there too. Again, there's your historical and forecasted purchase services. One of the things that I want to bring to everybody's attention is starting in 2015 through 2020, we've made a concentrated effort to scrub green, was purchase service costs down. A lot of that was purchase services, we were buying employees from other entities, and now that we're, now that we brought them into our fold, they're now our employees. So by doing that, you know, by decreasing your purchase service cost, but having the same people, our salaries and benefits are going to go up. However, having said that, starting with 2021 and moving forward, we have a pretty low increase on our year-over-year increase to our purchase services later. Taking a look, you can, this is one of the major lines of the five-year forecast, it's orange in your book there, it's line 6.010, this is your revenue over expenditure. This is a great sense, gives you a great sense of what a school district's fiscal health is. Positive number indicates that school districts are spending within its means, basically. A negative number indicates that the school district is spending or is trending to spend more revenue than it brings into that year. Typically, a forecast has estimated a negative number because the forecast is showing the trend, and it does not include future changes or adjustments to that trend. That's the one thing that's difficult about these forecasts, they don't allow for changes, you know, we're just taking a snapshot in time today, and then if these numbers happen to fall better or fall worse, you know, the administration, you have a place along with the board members in place right now, will make adjustments to make sure that if it's negative, we'll make sure it doesn't happen, and if it's positive, we'll make sure it doesn't happen.
Justin, is the negative, because it doesn't, part of it, it doesn't reflect levies now?
Yeah, so the one that I highlighted, the 10.010 in your booklet there, that does not include the renewal levy for the safety and security levy. If you go down to the very, very bottom line, that doesn't include it. I highlighted the 10.10, just, you know, just to make sure that that is guaranteed money as opposed to going to a levy, making sure the voters approve it. So again, what this chart shows, this is our historical and our future revenue over expenditures. In 2015, you can see that our expenditures were way higher than our revenue, and then starting in 2016 all the way until 2023, we are forecasting to have positive revenue over operations. And then your 2024 is when we start spending more than we're bringing in. This is just a quick snapshot of the forecast of the sheet that you have in front of you. Again, I think it's important just to highlight the total revenue, the total expenditure, results of operation, and then what our beginning and end cash balance looks like. So starting in 2024 to 2025, we're anticipating to lose, or I should say, have our expenditures higher than our revenue, and that'll eat into our cash balance, still ending with a very positive cash balance of 15.5 million. Right now, we are at, we're anticipating to end with 16.6, so in the five-year forecast, dropping a million dollars. That's yet to be determined, we'll do what we can in our power to make sure that our expenditures don't get above that $24 million mark. Historically, as you've seen it, our revenue is always right around $24 million. We don't have any levies that we're going to be going out and asking voters for anytime soon, so what we need to do is make sure that our expenditures stay below $24 million. soon, so what we need to do is make sure that our expenditures stay below $24 million. Some final comments, we'll need to keep an eye on property tax delinquencies related to COVID-19 and mortgage forbearance. Like I said, we haven't had any effect on our first-half collections, but we want to make sure that our second half stays the same. Likewise, we'll need to keep and monitor our spending related to our revenue, but again, overall, the district is in good financial standing, and will continue to do so for the forecast. Any questions?
Just on with, when you were going over expenditures, you covered that there's like $1.3 million leaving the district via transfer outs?
Yeah.
And I know that, what was it, about a year or two ago, we pretty much shut down open enrollment, and I don't know where our teacher, I mean, student ratios are now, but should we be looking at open enrollment, like, at least from neighboring districts again, to?
We are, we're monitoring it.
Move that number back?
Yeah, we have some kids into different grade levels at a, at a little bit better rate than we were before, so we're going to continue to monitor that, and when we can, we'll take more in and not have it frozen like it was, because there's a balance there, as you know.
Right.
Justin was looking at that, and we wanted to be sure that we weren't exceeding the number of open enrollments that we should be taking, because the balance was starting to get exceeding the nine, and so.
Where, right now, though, had we closed open enrollment altogether, unless you were already grandfathered in?
Except at the, yeah, at the kindergarten, yes, the answer is yes, but we're starting to look again at the kindergarten level this year, and hopefully be able to take some in that we hadn't been able to.
So if we get to the point where we take a look, and some of the grades are declining in enrollment, and have some room to grow, will we, will we put the word out, at least to neighboring districts, that there's availability, or?
Yeah, that's a number.
Because people are going to stop asking, right, if they think it's closed, and there are people that I think, you know, maybe had intended to come here, but got turned away or whatever, and maybe they'll change their mind, if, you know, if it makes sense, especially for, you know, I'm thinking about those neighborhoods like Indian Ridge and some of those that are actually in Vermillion, but can't go to school here, right?
Yeah, if you, now that Justin's finished up the five-year forecast, if you can allow us to get back, look at the numbers again, and then we'll.
If it makes sense, you know.
We'll let you know then what we're thinking, and show you how we can shut down.
Yeah, when Mr. Pepin and I first spoke about it, the first way you want to look at it is just to make sure you have room in your elementary schools right now, and our elementary school is pretty full, we have more room as you go on into later grades, but elementary school is pretty full. But what we'll do, and again, we do have revenue to offset those losses from the open enrollment, that we do have students coming in, but again, we can, we can take a look at all that stuff, and give the board a full report next, and it's not around here, just the world situation.
Justin, when is the safety and security levy up to the level?
2023, or 2024, 2024.
Okay, so we have a couple years on it, I couldn't remember how long.
It was 18th, so it'd be 2020.
Is it fine?
It's five-year levy, so 2023, 2024 is when we stop collection.
So 2023 is when it would be up on the ballot, okay.
Thank you for making it so understandable, too, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions on this?
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Okay, now we have our consent agenda. Superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the April 12, 2021 regular meeting. Number two, recommend a resolution to approve following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Miola or the REE as listed, and replacement as listed. Number three, approve the inter-agency agreement between LC, Board of Developmental Disabilities, Early Head Start and Head Start effective July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Number four, approve the 2021-2022 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Number five, approve the following employment action, one-year supplemental contract for the 2020-2021 contract school year to Brittany Drost, musical choreographer, Level 5, Step 1, and Jamie Sexton, producer and major musical, Level 7, Step 1. Number six, a one-year additional duties contract for the 2020-2021 contract school year to Adam Beckwith, assistant director, major musical, Level 9, Step 0. Number seven, summer 2021 employee contract to Joshua Parsons, technology helper, Zach Armstrong, technology helper, and Damian Lutz, grounds. Number eight, special projects rate for 2020-2021 for summer hours up to 30 hours to Brooke Spafford, Kelly Collins, Anna Marie Kruger, and Laura Moyer. Number nine, a one-year certified contract to 2021-2022 contract school year to Minroy Dale, DES school counselor, Level 4, Step 1, for 184 days plus 10 additional days. Number 10, Allison Scollan, SMS teacher, to VHS school counselor contract year 2021-2022 plus an additional 15 days. Number 11, two-year administrator's contract to Catherine Smith, psychological support and intervention assistant, 211-day contract. Number 12, retirement of James Bolado, assistant superintendent, effective July 31, 2021. Anything need to be removed?
Okay, just to prime it on, because Phil touched upon Tim Bolado, we appreciate all his years of service to the district, he's been a lot of great things for us.
Yeah, agree. I have a question, on item eight, the special projects rate, there's nothing listed, is it just a normal per diem, or how does that, what is that?
It's $28 an hour, is special project rate, and then maximum 30 hours.
Okay.
And that's for, what you're looking at is preschool testing, basically, that's all preschool-related, probably couldn't put that in the, what this is for.
Sounds good.
That whole group is going to be working with preschool.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Public participation. Public participation section of the Board of Education agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board of their compliments, concerns, and or questions. Would anyone like to speak? I think everybody has. I would just like to take a minute just to touch on what we were talking about earlier. This fall, we are going to be launching our search for the superintendent for our district, and we plan to have him or her hired by the end of the school year, well, the end of the calendar year. I just want to touch on that at all. Just, it's time to let Phil retire and then enjoy his family. It's going to be hard to do, but we will, we will be doing this this fall, we're going to work with the ESC. Yes.
I think that that's a good move on behalf of the board, because I've talked with several of ESC superintendents and superintendents just across the district, and different districts, I should say, and there's always a lot of competition for that superintendent's position, and a lot of times, just a lot of changes that happen, that our people are vying for different superintendents' positions, I have no doubt that this will be an attractive position, and you'll be able to, by going out early and hiring that position, put yourself into a situation where you'll be able to find a really top-notch candidate, and I think it gives other boards of education more time for them to make their decisions and decide what they want to do in terms of hiring, because that's going to create a vacancy amongst their school districts. So it's a chain reaction that happens across districts, and I think that by going out early, you're giving yourself a good advantage in finding the best possible candidate, and you're giving yourself plenty of time to think about it and find the right fit for what you believe will be the best for the district. So I think it's a good idea of what you've decided to do.
Okay, we have the date and location of upcoming board meetings. Board meetings will be held in this room, it says cafeteria. We're done with the cafeteria, right?
Yes, Mrs. Gray.
We'll be in here. Regular meeting Monday, June 14, regular meeting Monday, July 12, and a regular meeting Monday, August 9. Is that good for everyone so far? Okay, recommend a resolution to move into executive sessions if permissive matters require to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I'll go. I'll second.
Do you call the rule, please?
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0, and the time is 02:00.